2014 and it's great to be in San Pedro. Very great to be at the Port of Los Angeles and see many friends, both those who work for the city of Los Angeles, the Port of Los Angeles, and those who live here. I'm joined by the great Councilman Joe Buscaino, who I'm so proud of your family and your work that you've done following those big shoes that Janice hanged.
High heels.
High heels, man. But, good job. Give it up for Big Joe.
Thank you.
Before we get on with the port business, I do want to call the airport issues up real quick so that we could get those handled so you get back to LAX. Let's just talk the airport issues, we could.
Yes. Under item seven, the Board of Airport Commissioners submits for council approval the second amendment to the concession agreement with the joint venture for the operation of the advertising concession at Lawa LLC, also known as JC Deco Airport, Inc., which is an exclusive contract for the provision of all advertising at LAX and Ontario International. Now that Lawa has awarded a separate terminal media operator contract for all advertising at LAX to JC Deco Airport, the proposed second amendment to the agreement with the joint venture would remove all references to advertising locations at LAX as of February 1, 2014, and would reduce the minimum annual guarantee to $250,000. Also, the CAO has submitted a report and recommendation to the mayor on this matter.
Madam CAO.
Recommend approval, Andrew Mills, CAO office. The only thing I would add is that the minimum guarantee of $250,000 was based upon the work that airport's staff did in historical references.
Very good. And Mr. Adams?
Mark Adams, Los Angeles World Airports. This would, as the chief legislative analyst representative indicated, this would continue the advertising program in Ontario, and we ask for your approval.
Absolutely. Mr. Buscaino? Good. Approved. Next item.
Under item eight, the Board of Airport Commissioners submits for approval a concession agreement with ABM Parking Services to provide transportation and parking management services for the employee parking lots at LAX, also provide design installation and maintenance of a new turnkey parking access control system at LAX's remote employee parking lots, and provide shuttle transportation services between Metro's Green Line Station and the central terminal area at LAX. And the CAO has submitted a report and recommendation to the mayor on this matter.
Thank you, Andrew Mills, CAO office. I would just like to add that following discussion with airport staff, it was determined that this request will be submitted to council under section, charter section 606, and secondly, that in addition to what the CLA has mentioned, this particular contractor will service 6,300 parking spaces and will utilize 29 buses to transport the riders. We recommend approval.
Very good. Mr. Adams?
Mark Adams, Los Angeles World Airports. Yeah, this is basically to operate our employee parking lots that the airline employees and concessionaires and such would use, and provide shuttle services for those employees to the terminal area.
Okay. Mr. Buscaino?
This lot is owned by Lawa?
Correct.
Okay. Recommend approval. Thank you, Mr. Buscaino. Second all the way. So ordered. We thank the airport. Get back to the airport. Keep it working safely, and appreciate all the hard work that Mary Lindsay and others are doing out there, all the way through.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Buscaino, I'd like to now ask that the ambassador, Ms. Martinez, come, the president of the Port of Los Angeles, as well as Gary Lee Moore, the acting director. Feel comfortable, you can sit down or however you want to do it.
It is my-
Before you make your remarks, I want to welcome you because you live in my district. And Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Garcetti chose a great one from my district. Having been an ambassador and a diplomat, you have a great understanding of the world. And I think the Port of Los Angeles is the world port, Cynthia Ruiz, as you so aptly say, and all the keys that go from everybody doing the work that's here. So before you make your remarks, though, what is great is whether, whatever part of the city you're in, there's someone who cares deeply about all things, but especially the Port of Los Angeles and San Pedro. I'm going to ask Mr. Buscaino to, I had to introduce my constituent, but I want you to say a few words right now, Joe Buscaino.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for agreeing to have the TCT committee meeting here in the harbor area. I want to thank Gary Lee Moore and the entire Port of Los Angeles family for being such great hosts. Thank you so much. And to our residents, our community-based organization, labor, business members, thank you for being here as well. What we're going to hear today, the agenda before you, a lot of information on ensuring that the Port of Los Angeles remains the number-one cargo container in the country, but also the importance of making sure that this port is also a people port as well with our waterfront redevelopment efforts. We're also going to hear on the efficiencies, looking at the efficiencies of the Port of Los Angeles, looking at technology that's going to be before us, and how we're going to use our workforce to encourage them, and also to encourage our business partners to train our workforce when it comes to that. But this is a great opportunity, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much.
I think I would like to come down here another twice a year at least, or even more if we have an agenda item which is so important. Good movement is so important, and as deep as the Port of Los Angeles is, it's deeply into every neighborhood in Los Angeles and Southern California, so it's not just the city, but all over. And the one item I will ask you, I think we should have a discussion. I like competition, and I think I like Long Beach. I like Los Angeles. I don't know if it works if we're together, even though that was one of the commissions I want to talk to you about that. Maybe we should have that lengthy discussion so we give a full, they get some item. But, Madam Ambassador, please.
I simply want to say, on behalf of the Board of Harbor Commissioners and the Port of Los Angeles, welcome to our meeting room. May you have a productive and happy meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ambassador.
Ambassador Martinez for mayor, shortest speech. Give her a hand.
Counselmember Labange and Counselmember Buscaino, we appreciate the thoughtfulness and Councilman Bonn and the thoughtfulness that you three dedicate to our issues and bring. We have a number before you today, and, you know, I just want to share that we're very pleased that the shipping companies continue to cede the value in the Port of Los Angeles. And in the first three months of this year as compared to 2013, we're up over 4% in increased cargo. So, we don't know if that's a trend, but we sure like it, you know? And so, it's very exciting. The men and women are so dedicated to delivering those projects and services and security necessary that people feel comfortable in coming here. So, on behalf of all of us, thank you for coming.
Did you want to do, you want to do?
Item number two.
Item two, the Board of Harbor Commissioners submits for council approval a foreign trade zone operating agreement with Agility Logistics Corporation for the operation under foreign trade zone rules of foreign trade zone number 202, Site 11B, located in Carson, California. The agreement would have an initial term of five years with three renewal options for five years each for a potential maximum term of 20 years. The CAO has submitted a report and recommendation to the mayor on this matter.
Alvin Newman, CAO's office, we agree with the CLA's assessment, and we recommend approval.
Mike DiBernardo with the Port of Los Angeles, this is for Agility, as was mentioned, and they are located in Carson, north of the 405 and west of the 710.
Mr. Chair, if I may. Mike, just for public knowledge, explain to us and those members here who rarely get an opportunity to visit the TCT Committee what an FTZ is.
Actually, an FTZ allows the importers to either defer their duties with U.S. Customs. It's a government program, and we've actually been in the program for about 25 years. We're going to be celebrating our 25th anniversary a little later this year. And it basically is a government program that allows importers to defer duties or pay them after they are moved out of the zone and into the marketplace. If they re-export them, actually those duties are not paid. So they can do some manipulation to cargo and then re-export it out of there, and duties are not paid. So, in a nutshell, that's what a foreign trade zone is.
Thanks, Mike.
Welcome.
Celebrate that, Michael, on the 20th anniversary. We want to make sure the commission's involved to voice it, and I don't know how you want to do it, whether you want to invite, maybe check with Mayor Garcetti's office, I don't know if the deputy mayor is here. Invite the mayor down here to invite the mayors of all these towns, whether it's Carson or San Bernardino, Riverside, wherever you are, to the importance of this, and make it a big day. Because I think it's so important that people know. Because the other thing, too, with this program, I see Norman Arakawa, who's always the champion for the port. Thank you, Norman. The situation, that people see this as an opportunity to maybe do something, the next step in their business, not realizing this is available. So I know you put the paper, the ads in the local paper, or the awareness, so this is very good. So, Mr. Buscaino is very proud of it. I'm proud of it. So, onward and upward. So, approval.
And item three, the Board of Harbor Commissioners submits for approval the second amendment to foreign trade zone operating agreement with Howard Hartree Incorporated, which is a contract for the operation of a foreign trade zone warehouse and office at Site 27, located in Wilmington in the city of Los Angeles. The proposed amendment would exercise the first renewal option to extend the term for another five years, beginning on May 1, 2014, and ending on April 30, 2019. The CAO has submitted a report and recommendation to the mayor on this matter.
Alvin Newman, CAO's office, we concur with the CLA's assessment, and we recommend approval.
Yes, and this is for renewal for Howard Hartree, located in Wilmington. They're north of Harry Bridges and east of Freeze Avenue.
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Under item one, we have a presentation by the Harbor Department on its Trade Connect program, which provides education and training to small and mid-sized businesses on the process and requirements of exporting goods and services to international markets.
Good afternoon, Councilman Labange and Councilman Buscaino. It's good to see you today. And it's my pleasure this afternoon to give you a very brief update, because I know time is of the essence for you with all the items you have before you. But we'd like to give you a brief summary of our trade development initiatives, of which Trade Connect is our flagship. But first, before I do that, I'd like to introduce my colleagues, Norman Arakawa and Jean Cornell, back there, who are waving, who through their hard work make these programs possible. So, to explain the background of the program, I think it might be good to explain briefly why exporting of the goods and services of LA and the LA region are important for our city and our port, and then briefly explain the challenges and opportunities that we face. So first, we might ask, show me the money. What is the actual direct dollar value of exports to the LA Customs District? And I'd like to show you this, because I think you'll find it interesting. Because in the year 2013, we had a record year of exports of $127 billion. That was almost a 5% increase. Now that, I must say, is through the, what we call the gateway. That's both the port and the airport. So it shows a very strong record in history, but imports still dominate with over 2 to 1. So that basically gives us a challenge. So what are some of the advantages that we have here? Well, first, our region is still the largest manufacturing center in the United States. And exports provide a market diversification for our companies in our region. So really, export development is a form of economic development. So to come back to the port, why is exporting important for the port? Well, first of all, as you know, the container ships are growing. The ships come in full, but when they leave the port, they've got 55 or 60% empty. So, the most efficient use of our ships and containers and port equipment would be if we had ideally a balanced loads. So, what are some of our advantages? Well, in the San Pedro Bay ports, we have over 80 sailings a week to the Pacific Rim. That includes Asia and Latin America. And we have 13 container lines that fight for companies' businesses. That means equipment availability, good export rates. And we have the greatest number of logistics and distribution centers in the entire United States, so it's an ideal platform for distribution. And of course, you know about our great rail links to 14 regional U.S. markets, and we just talked about our foreign trade zone. Some of the other advantages are that we have, as a result of all these sailings, the greatest number of origin and destination ports of call. That means more destinations for U.S. companies wanting to export made-in-America goods. So, we're number-one customs district in the United States for both air and sea cargo. But I'm just here to say that being number one brings some great advantages. As well as being our largest employment sector, we have a huge number of specialized service companies with professionals with linguistic and international skills that we can leverage to increase trade. And we have 1,000 flights per day at the airport, as well as 100 trains a day through the port complex. So as a result, we handle a third of U.S. global trade, so why not leverage that for economic development? And I put here very quickly 2010 figures showing what our main markets are. Now, it doesn't include Latin America, because they're rapidly growing up the chart, but I wanted to point out that in 2010, we basically rebounded from the recession. This is a great leading indicator. So we lost a huge amount of cargo during the recession, and we bounced back in 2010. Now, for example, we're even gone higher. China, which was 144, is now 159. But this is good news. The other piece of good news from this chart is that we're seeing increased diversification, particularly to Southeast Asia. Here are top exports. If you think that it's just scrap paper and scrap metal, actually, we have an eclectic mix of commodities that move at very high value in some cases, for example, civilian aircraft parts and diamonds. But diamonds don't move by the port, they move by the airport, as you might imagine. So I just put those chart, this chart up here to show the eclectic diversity of our exports from our region. So, what are some more advantages? Well, when the President signed the U.S.-Korea Free Trade Agreement, this gave a terrific boost to us, because it brought tariffs for California wine and citrus products, nuts, for example, down from 35 to 45% tariff to zero overnight. And with the new trans-Pacific partnership, which covers about 40% of world GDP, we're also going to have a tremendous advantage for our region. So, bottom line, California will be the largest U.S. beneficiary of these U.S. free trade agreements. So, after we've seen the opportunities, what are the challenges? Well, of course, we have to keep investing in infrastructure, we have to keep our costs competitive, but we're going to talk briefly about education. 85% of California manufacturers don't export, and 95% of consumers are projected to be outside the U.S. in the coming decade. And 80% of economic growth will also be outside the U.S., all the more reason that exports will be the driver for the next economy. So now, coming back to our program, local companies have fears. When we surveyed them, they said, "I don't know how I'm going to get paid. I don't know how I'm going to find reliable customers and distributors. Which country should I start with? Is someone going to steal my intellectual property? And I don't have staff to do the documentation." So these are some basic elements that we address for the small business community. We started with an introductory workshop, and we worked our way up to topic-specific, market-specific products, and an advanced course that has a series of 10 in-depth programs. Who are our partners? Well, government at all levels, the LA City Council, we try to reach out to every council district. Los Angeles World Airports has been a close and hard-working partner since day one. Mayor's Office of International Trade, also the Economic and Workforce Development, and the Minority Business Development Agency. But at the state, we have cooperation from the governor's business office, and of course, our main presenters are from the federal agencies of the Department of Commerce, SBA, and Exim. And who are our hosts? Local chambers and ethnic chambers primarily, as well as professional groups. So, this gives you just a flavor of...
I was testing Gary's hearing. Good job, Gary. Southern California Association of Governments, SCAG. Do you know about them?
Yes, I know about them.
They should be a partner organization. That goes for the Empire, all the, from Ventura County to San Bernardino. I'll introduce you to the head guy.
I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I know for a fact, the port's working with SCAG.
Not on his report. We want the report detailed.
The executive director of SCAG mentions the, what an awesome responsibility we have in moving goods here, and how each cargo, each can hits every congressional district in this country. So we know the...
I got it, but I want to see it listed, and also maybe we could have a SCAG meeting down here, just so that people know the importance. And let Long Beach share it, too. You guys get along, don't you?
Yeah. And SCAG would open up a door to rolling our program throughout Southern California. So here are some of the partners, colorful slide, and here's, you might recognize one of the individuals in this photo.
Joe's in the picture. Joe's talking. Actually, the chairman arranged this photo.
Right. It works.
So this is an example of us trying to welcome the trade ministers from our main trading partners. And one of the programs that we're having coming up at the airport in Council District 11 is our export workshop for aerospace suppliers. But you might also recognize another council member up here with the mayor of Huntington Park at our bilingual Spanish-English program.
Harvard College.
So, here's just a quick list of how we've increased the number of programs from initially seven to 63 in the last number of years, and increased our attendees. And we've, pleased to say, we won some awards, the Presidential E-Star Award, the LA Quality and Productivity Commission in November, and the National Association of Small Business International Trade Educators, as well as awards from the Department of Commerce.
Trade Connect is the port's pioneering program to turn entrepreneurs into exporters, and it's having a positive impact on the economy.
What Trade Connect does is actually connect small businesses with the resources that the port has in terms of teaching them, helping them, holding their hand, to get them to understand that by exporting their goods and services, they really have a greater opportunity to succeed.
Trade Connect is an export education program, and it's a very simple one, because it brings together the experts in international trade to help connect the companies to the resources they need to export.
We manufacture Asian and multi-ethnic fusion sauces. We got the call from Dubai saying, "We love your products, we want them." It became a research question, how are we going to export? What does it take? And that's where Trade Connect came to my rescue.
So in essence, Trade Connect is a coaching program where we connect the merchants and entrepreneurs to new markets overseas.
I learned how to ship, how to find the freight forwarders, how to find the trading partners on the other end. Getting those resources and those working tools have made exporting these products so easy and successful.
Port officials, often joined by U.S. Department of Commerce and Export-Import Bank representatives, explain trends, provide resources, and suggest contacts.
Businesspeople participate to learn about overseas markets, as well as logistics, regulations, and financing.
Last year, I needed to know about, more about export financing, and it was perfect, because that's what I focused on. The first shipment that I did, it took nine months to get paid. Second one, it took six months to get paid. Really, I have, my business is much more profitable in the exporting because of Trade Connect.
Trade Connect has helped probably over 6,000 entrepreneurs in the past seven years, and we hope to reach out to many more of them.
It has grown our business from shipping to one country to shipping to five countries, thanks to Trade Connect.
International business is a bright spot for California, as the Golden State's annual exports total about $160 billion, a 25% increase since 2009. Leading the way are computer and electronic products, transportation equipment, machinery, manufactured items, and chemicals.
Trade Connect is about fostering a new global view for American businesses, to see the world as one marketplace, and it's working.
The President of the United States gives an award to the top export service companies called the E-Star Award, and we're very pleased to have won that award on May 20.
And the port's winning approach, innovative thinking, superior logistics, and railway and highway connections to major U.S. markets make it the perfect gateway to ship abroad.
Thank you very much, Councilman.
Jim, thank you, and Norman, and all your team. Give them a big hand, folks.
Jim, if I may, if you can cut my cut. Thank you. Thanks for your presentation, Mr. Chair, if I may. Thank you. The incredible program. In fact, a year ago this time, I was in the White House for a briefing at our Access DC, our annual Access DC trip, and the White House clearly respects and acknowledges Trade Connect here in our own backyard. So I acknowledge, acknowledge the entire port team for making this happen, and including our partners. My question is, how can we have, how are you reaching out to the Cheryl's of the world that we just heard on the video? What are you doing? What's your, I'm all big on measurables. What's your measure of effectiveness when you're reaching out to businesses like Cheryl's?
Well, in order to keep our costs down, really what we do is partner with organizations such as chambers of commerce in each, for example, there's over 88 municipalities in LA counties. So we go out to the local chambers, and especially the economic development folks in those chambers, and say, "Look, this is our program." We brief them on it, and then we try to use that as a platform. And we also reach out to ethnic chambers, whether it's the Asian Business Associations in each of the districts and areas. They're very entrepreneurial, and they're always delighted to host us. So they proved an extremely good outreach. And of course, we work with different types of, it's like multidimensional format, because we also reach out to, you know, the Port Tech has been a host for a couple of events. We also reach out to elected officials, in some cases have mailing lists of manufacturers in their district. So we try to use every possible means of partnering.
How many of these businesses have we've touched in Harbor City, Harbor Gateway, Wilmington, San Pedro?
Well, again, we have a total aggregate, you know, we haven't been able to sort it by computer, by businesses, but we've had, I think, a, you know, a high proportion of our events in the three districts. But we could find out specifically how many companies.
If you can just get that to back out, I appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, if I may apologize, but I want to do a public comment right now. I have two cards, and I know some people may want to get on their horse, because they just did public comment. So let me call on Don Compton first, followed by Manny Silverteen. Is that right, Manny? Sergeant, can you give a little help right here, just for, thank you.
Come to the right. Come to the right. There we go.
And I do a two-minute public comment, but if you need more, take it, okay?
Uh, yes. Thank you. My name is Don Compton. I'm a legally blind jurist doctor. I'm the self-appointed public advocate for my hometown of Wilmington. And after being retired as an educator, I have been working diligently on my own to represent the working poor families of Wilmington. I have three jurist doctors, including myself, who support this next issue that CD-15, for the last 25 years, has remained isolated from the rest of the city by not bringing light rail down here. It's supposed to be the Metro Gold South extension that's right on the MTA's master plan, and has been for a dozen years. But the only way this thing can be delivered and funded is if someone from CD-15 gets on that, gets a mayoral appointment to that MTA Board of Directors. It hasn't happened in 25 years, and it's deliberate. In fact, we three jurist doctors, myself, Jenny Chavez, who's Mr. Buscaino's Chief of Staff, and Ms. Maddox, M-A-D-D-O-X, Capri Maddox, Assistant City Attorney, Special Advisor to Mr. Fuhr himself, have all agreed that there is a probable, ongoing, equal protection of the law violation going on here, because we haven't got the extension down here that all other areas in the city of Los Angeles with our population or larger have theirs. We're the only area in the entire city of Los Angeles without this direct connection, and Wilmington, the heart of the harbor, is most suitable for it. This has the full support of Ms. Allison Becker and the three jurist doctors so named. Please, work with His Honor the Mayor, he has four votes on the MTA Board of Directors, to get this thing addressed, because the LA County Civil Grand Jury has already taken up my complaint and will come down with one decision or the other by June. Do we want them to handle this, or can we? Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming in and reporting that. I support that, and be an advocate for it.
Right. In addition to moving cargo, we need to move people in and out of this port, in addition with our waterfront redevelopment.
Hey, Donald, I got a question for you, Donald. It's a tough one. I'm a Silver Lake guy. You ever been to Silver Lake?
Yes.
Okay. But I'm also a lover of San Pedro, and I have great respect for Wilmington. Now, this is just a tough question, now. I don't want to put you-
Anything at all. Go ahead.
I like San Pedro a lot, okay? But also, there's a Long Beach freeway that goes to Long Beach, Pasadena freeway goes to Pasadena, Hollywood freeway goes to Hollywood, Santa Monica freeway goes to Santa Monica. I would like to come to your leadership in Wilmington and ask if we could begin this discussion to add San Pedro freeway as opposed to the Harbor freeway. Now, I see you giving me a cold response, so I...
The MTA's master plan calls for bringing the light go...
I got that. I'm going to support you on that a thousand percent.
Then please ask your question directly so I can answer it.
Can I change the name of the Harbor freeway to the San Pedro freeway without offending you with the approval of the state? Because I like where the freeway ends in San Pedro.
Is, Mr. Labange?
It is.
My frank, honest answer is no.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. I appreciate it, Mr. Compton.
Because they're coming here to Wilmington in the end because there is no sincere support in San Pedro to bring this light rail here. Otherwise, it had been here by, since Joan Mulkey Flores urged it in 1988, and she was snubbed for it.
Very good, Mr. Compton. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. That's okay. That's all right. We got it there. Okay, thank you. The next public speaker, Mr. Silverman, is that right? Silverstein?
There's Mary.
Mary, Mary, why did I say, I need my glasses, Mary?
It's probably my handwriting.
Well, I want to be blamed for it because I just got beat up by Don, and I don't want to take two people beating me up down here. Don, have a good day.
Well, you too, Silverman. We want to get you here in half an hour next time so the traffic doesn't hold you up by light rail.
You got it, your light rail.
Hi. Good afternoon, and thanks for coming down. So six years ago, the port and led, did I turn it off? Can you hear me? Okay, six years ago, led by Janice Hahn, the port and seventeen environmental groups entered into the TRAPAC MOU. And the TRAPAC MOU has a component in it that requires a report to this committee regarding a land use study. The land use study is supposed to be an off-port impact study, and it's focused on both Wilmington and San Pedro. And I'm here today to give a quick update on where we are with that study. I represent Harbor Community Benefit Foundation, and we're the local San Pedro nonprofit that oversees the Port Community Mitigation Trust Fund. And I'm happy to say we've had great relations with CD-15 and with the port staff to work on numerous projects that are here in Pedro and Wilmington. We've actually put $2 million into the community in the last two years from all types of projects that we're working on. So the land use study was supposed to have been done by a contractor called Bay Area Council Institute. And the last report that we provided was back in 2012, and at that time, it was to say that the contract had been signed and we were moving forward with it. I'm here today to give an update on that and to say unfortunately, that contract didn't go very well, and the contractor was terminated after about nine months of work. So our board is now, and that's, so the contractor terminated, settlement agreement was reached, and roughly one-third of the funds had been spent. So we now have about $195,000 still available in that fund, and we're about to go out with the new RFP, and we'll be back before this committee to provide you an update when that RFP is ready.
Thank you very much, Mary. Thank you. Okay. And now we're going to return to the next agenda item. Public comment has been completed. There's no other cards, and I see no one else for public comment. So we'll close public comment. Back to the agenda.
Under item four, the Harbor Department is to report in response to requests from this committee that were made on November 19th, 2013, in connection with consideration of the Second Amendment to the port's permit with TRAPAC. That permit is for the design, construction, and operation of a marine container terminal at verse 136 to 147 here at the port for a term of thirty years, ending in 2039. The Second Amendment, which was approved on by council that same day, provided for changes in project scope to build an automated container terminal instead of an expanded conventional terminal as was originally envisioned. On November 19th, the council adopted your committee's report and recommendations, which included approval of the Second Amendment, and which included requests that the Harbor Department report back in ninety days with specific procedural changes that will be made to rectify the issues raised in the reporting on the TRAPAC project, to ensure that such issues do not reoccur. Also, to report back on with a study on the impacts of automation, specifically on the impacts on the port, its workforce, nearby communities, and a cost-benefit analysis that takes into consideration the competitive challenges facing the port, and finally, a plan for integrating a liaison between labor and the Harbor Department.
Thank you very much. I have one public comment card before I call on staff. Tommy Fahey, thank you.
Good afternoon, Council Labange and Busciano. My name is Tommy Fahey. I represent IBEW, International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local Union 11, and I'm here to fully support the TRAPAC Terminal Development Program to move forward. You know, it's a key when it comes to the electrical grid infrastructure on upgrading it, and that could mean, you know, good construction jobs, especially now that TRAPAC is moving on projects right now, that the projects are moving forward and they're looking real good out there. So I just wholeheartedly support this project on moving forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Tommy. Hopefully, SKIG is next.
Okay, let's have a representative for the port want to make a presentation.
Good afternoon, Chairman Labange, Councilmember Busciano. It's an honor to have you in our boardroom. Last November, we came, when we came before you and you approved the Second Amendment to the TRAPAC permit, you asked us to come back and report on three specific items. So I'd like to spend a couple minutes, and I'll move through this quickly in recognition of the time of day and the fact that the record in front of you is pretty complete. So please stop me at any point if you have specific questions on any item. But I'd like to spend a couple minutes talking about the first report back that we owe you. Then I'm going to turn it over to Michael Keenan, who's going to talk a little bit about the automation study, and then I'll wrap up with the legislative liaison. So as you recall, we were tasked with finding ways to ensure that what happened in the TRAPAC Development Program did not happen again. Now, when we came to you in November, we were in the midst of completing an after-action report. This happened following our board action, which also constituted a significant amount of information about what had occurred in the TRAPAC Development Program. And then around the end of the year, when the after-action report was complete, and this was a piece of information that was provided in the packet you have in front of you, it was performed by a member of the city family. It was decided that we needed to have a complete outside set of eyes put on not only the information that we presented to our board in September, but also the significant body of information generated in the after-action review. So we went through a process where we approached firms on our on-call list. We did a mini RFP and came up with a firm by the name of Bronner. Bronner has significant experience dealing with public agencies that deliver significant infrastructure. And so what I'm going to do is tell you a little bit about what the Bronner report found. This is a little graphic that's in their, that's in their report, and it's catchy in that it shows a container ship with a bunch of boxes on it.
Just excuse my back. I like the big screen. I don't like looking at the little screen, so if you don't mind.
Not a problem. So you see a container crane with a ship and boxes. What Bronner did is they took what was on the left-hand side of the slide, which is what they call components of enterprise effectiveness. And this is a thing that they've learned over the years enterprises, organizations really need to have if they're going to deliver effective capital programs. And since they have benchmarked so many organizations, we took this, we took serious consideration of what they offered here. They found there were two areas that we need to work on, two broad areas that we need to work on in the Harbor Department. First is risk management, like you see at the top of the crane on the left, and the second is integration. And they fashioned six different recommended action items that came out of that. You see item one, the restructure, two, implement, three, independent verification and validation, four, establishing roles, five, promoting a culture of risk management, and then the last was integrating technology. So each one of these recommendations goes to the specific item, cause, or issue that was identified both in the AAR and in the Bronner report. And you see on the left on this are the things that we found that needed to be dealt with, increases in project cost estimate, the delay in the permit filing, procedures on our leases, communication gaps, and so forth. So those are the things on the left that are addressed with the recommendations you see on the right. Now, one of the things that Bronner did is they assigned priorities because we know we're biting off a pretty big chunk to make some fundamental changes in our enterprise. And so these are what we call three-ship priorities. There are three is the highest priority. And the one thing that Bronner pointed to as the number-one issue that we need to work on is what's called our Project Development Committee, or PDC. Now, PDC has been around the Harbor Department for a lot of years, for decades, in fact, and at certain points in the Harbor's Department's history, it's been pretty effective at dealing with the issues at hand. However, as I'm sure councilmembers, you've recognized in the items that have come before you, it's a different world out there now. The complexity, the cost, and the urgency of the projects in front of us are different. PDC needs to change. It needs to become more relevant. It needs to become less informal. One of the things that Bronner said is it's too informal a group. It needs to be, have its charter revised, and it needs to become much more structured.
My coup points a committee.
This is by the general manager. The GM establishes the committee.
And who makes up the committee?
Right now, the committee is made up by the GM and the assistant GMs and the division heads. So all the key stakeholders internal are part of the PDC.
I would just add, Councilman, is one of the things is the ability to find and document decisions in a repeatable method. That's one of the key things that I've seen, is that in this committee, when you want to look back a year and a half, who made that decision? How was it made? That everything works through the committee, that, you know, the general manager can't supersede the committee. It really is, you know, institutionalized decision-making and process-thinking. And then, of course, that feeds right into the board. You know, working with Ambassador Martinez and the board, making sure that any new project that comes up during the year and so forth, how is that communicated on forward in a very institutionalized way? So it's not a person-dependent, but it's institutionalized.
And I think, as Gary mentioned, we recognize that the board is the policymaking body within the Harbor Department, so this all has to come to them. Getting it right is important, and getting these lines of communication right is critical. And given the complexity and the costs and the speed with which things are developing here at the harbor, this has to, this has to become better. And we've already implemented a number of changes to PDC. Our PDC process is moving better than I think it has in a long time, but we will continue to make these reforms because this is the number-one issue. Recommendation number two talks about transition to full accountability. I'd say on this, moving from an old paradigm of project management structure to the new project accountability structure, we're about halfway there on this arc, this arc you see. And one of the things that dovetails nicely with the PDC is that PDC involves all parts of the Harbor Department. And as organizations sometimes do, we've had a tendency to become a little bit too siloed. PDC brings together the development team on the infrastructure side, the business team on the deal side, and the financial team on the financial accountability side, the executive team, and then loops back to the board. So it crosses over, and our project management structure is needing to emulate the same thing. We've already made changes. For instance, a project manager on a critical project that maybe didn't get invited to meetings with a real estate group that are having tenant negotiations is now part of those meetings so that the negotiating team knows exactly what the infrastructure implications of negotiating points are. The infrastructure team, project manager knows where the business deal is headed. So that's already about halfway there, but that's the second critical item that Bronner pointed out. Into the two-ship side of the recommendations, number three is independent verification and validation. This is the kind of a process where you have another set of eyes on what the development team has done in terms of an estimate. We put tremendous effort into making the estimate for the TRAPAC projects, but we were wrong. And one of the ways we're going to deal with this is put more eyes on it and more independent eyes on it. This becomes particularly important as we get into these technology-delivering programs where we're doing some things we've honestly never done before.
Explain independent, how independent?
Someone who did not have a role in generating the original estimate, who did not do the design, who didn't really have a stake in it to begin with. So there's no reason for someone, for anyone to say, "Well, you know, I'm going to gloss over that one." Somebody completely un...
But the board will be aware of that, right? They'll report to the board, or the general manager, or whom?
They will report to the board through the PDC process. Because these independent verifications will bubble through the PDC and then come up to the board through committee or directly to the board.
Explain the technology on TRAPAC. How is the infrastructure that's being built today different than, say, Middle Harbor across the way?
Interestingly, it's not very different from Middle Harbor, but when we put the TRAPAC estimate together, we went and grabbed the consultant who had done the only other one ever built in the U.S. in Norfolk. We tasked them with doing this work, and we thought, "Well, we've got people that have done it. They should, they..." We put a lot of trust in it.
It was my understanding that the reason, one of the reasons for the overage was because of the new technology that's being built at TRAPAC.
And that is true, Councilman.
Not very similar to the Middle Harbor in Long Beach.
It's very similar because what we found is the technology that was employed in Norfolk was a generation or so behind the technology that's being applied at TRAPAC. The technology has moved so fast. Now, Middle Harbor has been moving fast also. But the other thing that's happening is the, some of the technology at Middle Harbor is different even on the same timeline as ours.
Also.
For instance, TRAPAC is using automated shuttle carriers and a certain type of key crane or wharf crane to drop the box and then carry it into the stacks. Middle Harbor is using automated shuttle carriers, a different vehicle that has a different kind of control systems. They have a different kind of crane. They're doing a dual-hoist crane that has an automated second stage. So all of these things force slightly different infrastructure and considerations on the technologies.
So it's the movement of cargo that differs between TRAPAC and Middle Harbor?
From the wharf into the stacks, largely, yes. On the same point, TRAPAC has a very advanced rail yard that has automatable cranes on it. So it's different in that regard. One of the things we've learned in benchmarking these automated terminals, I think, is that while the basic features are similar, the details are different. And if I were to say that one of the lessons learned in TRAPAC is the details will kill you if you don't really understand exactly what's going on.
Sure.
And that's a lesson we're taking very much to heart in the development of any other automated terminals at the port. Recommendation four is another two-ship, and that's, as you see these bubbles coming together, we need, we've decided we need to give our financial and audit group a little bit more active role in this as an oversight, as a resource, as an ability to help us as we move through these very expensive projects. We've already started a lot of this interaction, particularly on the long-term projections. And I think, Councilmember, we've shared that a little bit with your staff, and one of the things we've done is reached out to start having more regular meetings with your staff and actually cut you in on some of what we're doing here. So you can see some of these long-term projections. This is a logo, there's a graphic that I kind of like because it's descriptive. You know, as a propeller, if we don't do a better job, as I believe we are starting to now on risk management, we'll be diced up by this propeller because risk is a huge part of what we deal with now, especially as these projects get more complicated and expensive. So promoting this culture of risk management is already started. We've already made modifications in some of our lease agreements that share the risk with the customers so that if things change, it's... with the customers, so that if things change, it's automatically wired into the lease agreement, that they get a financial share of that change. And then the last one is a one-ship issue, and this is enterprise-issue software, getting our enterprise research program and the accounting software and the engineering software to talk to each other, so we have some effective tools. So the four things that lie ahead of us are to, again, review these with you. We've reviewed those with these with our commission last week and have got their thumbs up. Once it clears this committee, we'll establish a seat on a better government implementation steering committee to watch over our progress on these issues, assign accountability, and establish a monitoring framework. And we'd be glad to come back and tell you about it at any point. But we have already started moving forward on these, and we will continue to do so. So before, Councilman, before we move over to the second report back on automation, we thought it would be good for you to see what TRAPAC automation is going to look like. So if I could have you click on this and run this. This is an animation, starting from the ship, going to the shore, using these automated shuttle carriers. Again, there is an actual person on this wharf crane. From here on out, it's automated. These automated shuttle carriers will take the containers to-
You have someone, remote control, I'm thinking like a remote-control car, right?
No, these are fully automated.
But it's operated at a central control point.
These ASCs can be remote-operated, but in the mode they are right now, they're fully automated. Then the stack crane, the automatic stacking crane is fully automated. You see the truck driver will come into the slot, and you'll see that the driver has to get out of the truck and go to that little red booth, stands on a pressure plate. The computer will not let that box go onto the truck until that driver is in that box. That's one of the basic tenants of automation. You can't mix people and machines in the same space. Automated machines, I should say. And then, once it's on the truck, he takes off.
Mike, yes or no, will this improve the efficiencies in the Port of Los Angeles? Will automation overall improve the efficiencies at the Port of Los Angeles?
Short answer is yes. So with that, I'd like to introduce Michael Keenan, who is our Assistant Director of Planning, is acting as the Director of Planning. He's also our Chief Economist, and he's going to tell you a bit about a rather extensive amount of work he's done on the Container Terminal Automation Report.
Good afternoon. We were asked to provide a report to the City Council on a study of the impacts of container automation, container terminal automation, including impacts on the port, the workforce, and the community, and a cost-benefit analysis that takes into consideration the competitive challenges that the port faces.
Yes, thank you.
Some of the limitations of doing a study like this are that information on the cost structures, the business models, and the long-term business plans of terminals is not always readily available. And as Mr. Christensen pointed out in great detail, there's not one thing that's automation. It's a variety of different technologies that can be employed, both on the crane side and on the backland side. And so there's no single universe to compare against. The impacts are also going to be determined based on the interplay between labor and the terminal operators as well, in terms of staffing levels, contractual arrangements, and workforce retraining as well. And finally, the competitive environment, it's a dynamic one and not a static one, so it needs to take into account our competitive positions and the impact of potential of cargo growth over time as well. Preliminary results include, preliminary because I'm done, but on the labor and workforce impacts, automation will lead to a reduction in the amount of ILW labor that's required. But the amount of reduction across the port is going to depend on what types of technologies are employed, which is something that can be, will be worked out over time between terminal operators and labor. And the amount of reduction can be offset by new jobs in repair and maintenance of the automated equipment. And the ultimate impact is going to depend on the ultimate choice of staffing levels and the amount of workforce retraining that is effectively employed. Automation can improve the efficiency of the cargo handling and the speed and the velocity of cargo, which is especially important as, first, volumes increase, and, second, as larger ships arrive, because the amount of time it takes and the amount of operating capability that you have to handle a 12,000 TE ship is actually very different than handling two 6,000 TE ships. And automation as a technology can certainly help with that, handling these super-post-Panamax vessels.
So anywhere in the country are we seeing this type of technology, other than Long Beach and LA?
Norfolk is the model right now, but as Mr. Christensen, it's an older technology. New York, New Jersey has a terminal-
With this size?
Of this size, I'm not sure how big the Bayonne Terminal is going to be at New York, New Jersey, but they have a similar automated stacking crane system they're putting in. It may be a little bit smaller because they actually have to put their cranes in diagonally versus the wharf, as opposed to either a parallel or perpendicular structure, which you'd see here in TRAPAC or in Middle Harbor.
I see.
So. As for terminal operating costs, terminal operating costs are likely to go down under automation. The amount of labor reduction depends on, the amount of cost reduction is going to depend on labor cost savings versus the cost of capital employed. So again, it's going to depend on each terminal-specific characteristics. And because it's going to vary from terminal to terminal, it's not possible for us to determine on a port-wide basis what it's going to look like in the future, because there's a lot that remains to be seen, depending on what choices are made by both labor and terminal operators going forward. As for our competitive impact, automation, if it reduces terminal costs and increases operating efficiencies, can provide a competitive advantage to a terminal that employs it or a port that has terminals that have automation. Conversely, if other ports have automated terminals, that can give them a competitive advantage over the Port of Los Angeles. The amount of cargo at risk depends on, again, those differences between the cost structures at different ports.
Okay, we're, in two years that I've been here, it seems like we're competing more with Long Beach than any other port in the country. So how, Ambassador, you've heard of this as well, how is, okay, so the port tenants, I mean, at TRAPAC, we have folks solidified their, our lease agreement with our tenants or our customers, how long they're?
The lease term there? The lease term on TRAPAC, it should be 20 years, I believe? Yeah, I think it's at 20 right now.
And what's the situation at Middle Harbor and Long Beach?
That was a 30-year, I believe.
30-year lease with OCL?
Was it extended to 40? I think it may have gone even longer.
Is the shipping line? And they're at 40 years there?
I'm not sure. I think it probably is 40 years.
So it's a longer term there?
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead.
We took a preliminary look at the impacts on one container terminal, looking at the impacts on TRAPAC. And automation at TRAPAC is likely to result in about a 40%, 50% reduction in labor needed because of the impacts of both the auto-strad carriers, moving boxes from the cranes to the backland.
And that's been a concern here, my colleagues and I. What's a terminal operator doing to address that 40% reduction in the workforce?
Well, about a quarter of that has already been offset by the increase in number of mechanics that have been employed. So that actually reduces the amount that you would potentially see under that. Also, another offset is if that attracts more volume to the Port of Los Angeles because of cost advantages over competing ports, then cargo growth can offset that. Looking at the port complex as a whole, if the port continues to grow at anything over 2% a year, the additional jobs that you would get from, the growth in volume would result in more longshore jobs than you would lose to any kind of offset to automation.
And talk to me about internationally. Is this a case for ports around the world that are automated?
Yes. Ports around the world that have automated have automated for different reasons. Obviously, it depends on the companies, the particular characteristics, and the labor relationships. But my back-of-the-envelope answer is that European ports tended to automate because of high labor costs, and so the cost savings from automation drove that. Whereas in Asia, it's more often the high cost of land that drives you to densify, have much more dense terminal operation there, as opposed to the labor costs. So we here in the United States, and especially with the fantastic port complex like L.A. Long Beach, have been this middle ground where we have reasonable labor costs and quite a bit of land that has allowed us to operate on non-automated terminals so far. And that is something that will change as we start handling more cargo going forward. And so either automation or other efficiency technologies, often in partnership with labor, will be necessary.
You know, this issue came up at my house yesterday during Easter celebration. It was about, I think I had five longshoremen that we celebrated Easter together. And everyone's talking about TRAPAC down at the docks and how much of an impact it's going to have on their jobs. To Shane, you're looking at a 40% reduction, and we know what automation is coming. My family at the docks know what's coming. We just need to be sure we train the, retrain the workforce and have them ready for it. But you're telling me the terminal operator has a third of the 40% reduction or training in the mechanics?
About a quarter of that.
About a quarter?
Yes.
And the others?
Well, it's not in operation right now, and there's currently discussions going on between labor and management, both at TRAPAC level and labor agreement coastwide as well in terms of what is the, what's the appropriate boundary for, what work is within ILW jurisdiction versus other unions or non-union workforces. And so there's still quite a bit of uncertainty about how that's going to be resolved, but there actually could be quite a bit more work that can fall into ILW jurisdiction. So increasing the amount of potential jobs that workforce retraining can be helpful for.
Very good.
Bobby Olivera?
The new president of ILW 13, making his first appearance in front of TCT. Welcome.
Good morning, Councilmen. Good morning, crowd. So, well, the first time here, and I'm going to have to dispute pretty much everything that was just said. You know, first of all, we look at the labor costs when we talk about retraining the workforce. There's not a single longshoreman to date that's been taken out of a position where his job is going to be lost due to automation that's being retrained. Not a single one. We have 6,800 members, and not a single person is even enrolled in a program. The facility's already started, and we were out there the last two weeks. And when you talk about efficiency, you talk about getting the trucks out of the queue lines, getting them into the facilities, getting their cans loaded, and getting them out the gate. Anybody that went out and saw this operation will know, it's not efficient. It's slow. It's arduous. You only have to look at Virginia, where APM terminals gave up the lease because it was not a financially beneficial process for them. You only have to look to Australia, where they've had the same auto-strads for nine years. We just sent a delegation there. They told us it's still not working. They're still trying to get the bugs out of it. So really, what we're looking at is taxpayer dollars, port dollars, that are going to provide benefits to companies but not to the community. There's been no transparency. We worked over four years ago to try to get the schematics and the repair manuals for the equipment that is going to be brought onto the facility so that our workers could be prepared, so that when the equipment did arrive, that we'd have the workers on the dock to say, "We're here, we're ready to fix the equipment." And we were blocked by that, by the port's tenant. You know, we talk about new jobs, we talk about losing 40% of the workforce. The facility's working right now. We've had two ships in where they brought off cargo. They can call it testing, but when you bring off cargo off a ship, that's revenue generating, that's working a vessel. And you still have foreigners, and you still have people from outside of this community wandering the docks, doing work that is traditional longshore work. And we look at the equipment, and we talk about splitting a baby, so to speak, about whose work it's going to be. I think traditionally, the ILW and this Harbor community has recognized that the Port of Los Angeles and the Port of Long Beach, that's where longshoremen work. We don't build skyscrapers in downtown L.A. We don't repair elevators in Simi Valley. We're longshoremen, and the waterfront is, I dare to say this, but property of the ILW. We've been here for 75 years. We're not going anywhere. And I think there needs to be some transparency when money's put forth to these companies, that when automation comes, that there's some dialogue, not roadblocks, not you'll get it when you see it, because all that leads to is continually fighting. Every time a ship comes in now, we'll be out there, fighting for our jobs, putting things in front of the arbitrator, but more than anything, making sure that the dollars that were spent and are continuing to be spent on this project are not going for naught. We can't cry over what's happened, and again, we're going to look forward to what can be done in the future, but I think this is a big lesson. Automation hasn't worked in a large part of the world. You know, this equipment is not going to make the port more efficient. The port's going to be more efficient when the port tenants and labor get together and come up with real-life ideas, real-world ideas. Part of it is 3:00 gates. Part of it is opening up these facilities from 3:00 in the morning to 8:00 in the morning, when traffic is at a bare minimum on the highways, manning the facilities so that these truck drivers can come in. We all know what the freeways look like between 8:30 and 3:00 in the afternoon and 4:00 in the afternoon. They're packed. People are trying to get home. If we had light rail, they could probably get home a little easier. But they're trying to get home. We need the gates opened up middle of the night. A modern terminal, the World Port, and we shut down because of costs. And we're talking about, you've got to spend money to make money. Our guys are here at the dispatch hall. Our workers are here, ready to go to work from 3:00 to 8:00 in the morning, and the gates continually remain closed. And that's something that's got to change. There's got to be some transparency between these companies, the workforce, obviously the port and the city. We're all in this together. But what I don't think the community is here for, and I think there's going to come a reckoning, a day of reckoning, where the community's going to stand up and say, "All of this money was spent for what? To maximize profits for corporations that's going to leave this community." And I don't think that's what we want. I don't think we want to be standing on breadlines or having less of an Easter because we're losing 40% of our work. That's not good for the community, and it's not good for the port. So I would ask that the two councilmembers that are here and the port staff to readdress both the lines of communication between TRAPAC, the ILW, and the port, to become more transparent in what's happening, and to assist the ILW in demanding from TRAPAC that they provide the cross-training, that they put their money where their mouth is. We haven't had a single person retrained. Not a third, not a quarter, not a single individual has been retrained. Not a single individual's enrolled in retraining. And I think it's a shame that we sit here today and make statements that are going to go on the record that are clearly not true. And I would ask you guys to address those, and please get back to us. And I'm available to both the city councilmembers and the port staff at your will.
Thank you very much.
Bobby.
No other comment on that, on the report? I think you should take those concepts, too. I know one of the issues of labor is so key and working together, and is there an Assistant Port Director of Labor Relations here?
Councilmember, we're in the process of selecting that person.
Yeah, I think that's real key. And take their jacket off and roll up their sleeves and find a way to bring everybody together, find common good. I do believe it's a property of the people of Los Angeles, but I know if I had trouble with Mr. Compton, I think I would have trouble with your union if we had met on the street, so I won't. You don't understand what I'm saying. I'm saying that lightly. So this was important. Give your voices.
In the selection of the labor liaison, it's important to have an individual who has background in the labor front. So I know that's going to be part of this report, to direct the commission to swiftly, in light of the ongoing negotiations in the Bay Area, to swiftly make that selection of the labor liaison to the Port of Los Angeles. And then, lastly, my question, Mr. Chair, if I may. The overage of the cost overruns at TRAPAC, how are the cost overruns going to impact other critical infrastructure improvement projects like our L.A. waterfront here at the port?
Well, our board has, Gary Moore, interim Executive Director, our board has asked us to come back to them. We're scheduled, hopefully, May 1st, to go back to them to talk about preparing an amendment to TRAPAC to review the additional costs that were impacted, that resulted in the automation. So we're still reviewing which projects will be impacted as of this cost impact.
And just please be sure to get that to this committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Communication is the biggest skill on any kind of relationship, so that's the key. And having the city's interest with the city's- And having the city's interest, and the city should also have the interest of all, so that's such a fall under. Next.
So, I'm sorry, Mr., so it looks like we're going to note and file A and B, and then on C, we're going to direct, I'm taking your, taking your line. We're going to direct the port to identify a labor liaison position? That's on, on, on C, right?
Um, yes, if you, if that's what you want, the recommendation.
Okay with that?
Yeah.
So it'd be to note and file the, the report from the Harbor Department, and also to direct the port for, to include a labor liaison.
Correct.
In fact, if I may, Mr. Chair, um, I think we should hold, in hearing the concerns from ILW, I believe, we, let's hold the, the item that's, is that A? Um, I'm sorry, item, let's hold item B, unless you want to address Mr. Olivera's concerns about the lack of transparency, or if we hold B, so we can bring people to the table to continue to address their concerns?
I'm actually, tomorrow, Mr. Christians and myself have scheduled a meeting to go visit Mr. Olivera at 10:30 tomorrow, so I think it's always helpful.
We also need the, the tenant. Let's have TRAPAC represented there as well.
We'll, we'll definitely follow through on, on your request.
Okay, let's report back.
Why do we do this? Why do we, why do we do this? Why do we, if you're prepared to make action, the only thing I would put the brakes on is if, when we get to council, if you're not prepared, I'd hold it over until you're prepared. You prepared, we could go forward, because I trusted you, Gary Leemore.
Do we need council action on this?
This goes to council, right?
We don't, there's, we don't believe there's any council action.
But I would like to note, and I like to tell our colleagues what you guys are doing.
What we have before us right now is a report from the Harbor Department, and it's more of an informational report rather than one with recommendations. There's no recommendations within this.
With that being said, why don't we, well, let's hear it again in committee, okay? But move forward on that. Have the city's interest, the port's interest, but that also includes all the people, including those who represent it, okay? Thank you.
So that will be to continue this item.
Okay, we'll hear it again. It may be uptown, but it, we'll hear it again. Okay, up the San Pedro freeway.
Thank you so much for that report. Thank you.
All right, next item.
Yes, under item five, motion Buscayino Labong introduced on July 24th, 2012, proposes that the council ask the Harbor Department to report to this committee with regular monthly status updates on the progress made on all efforts related to the San Pedro waterfront project, such as crafted at the port, the downtown harbor, ports of call redevelopment, City Dock One, Plaza Park, among others.
Thank you. I have one public comment card, Mr. Ken Melendez. And Mr. Melendez, I apologize, you had six, too. So we already acted on six, so if you need, yeah, we did. Correct?
No, we haven't done six yet.
So we'll do you now. Okay, you don't have to get out of here. You're okay? You can do five and then come back for six?
Yes.
Thank you. Five, please, go ahead.
Okay, I gave both of you a packet here. First time I ever heard the term institutional racism. 1969, Delano, California. I took that picture when I was 15 years old. Next picture is me picketing in front of a store when I was 14 in the San Fernando Valley. The next item is, I'm asking some questions. What is institutional racism? What are cumulative impacts in environmental justice? The next item is a demographical profile of the community of Wilmington. The next item is the community and port plans under Mayor Hahn. You can see, it speaks for itself. Needs to be updated by me. After that, in 2003, every place you see me asking a question, that's me asking a question. That's, the port staff does as they, as they are, the mayor sets the policy of institutional racism. That's the actual policy being carried out. The next item is the Wilmington neighborhood assessment, done by the ARB, I believe. You can see where the impacts are. The next item is environmental justice policy, California State Lands Commission. The port is owned by the people of the state of California, all of us. It's not owned by foreign companies. It's not owned by anybody else. It's owned by all the people of the state of California. Next item is this project right here. It's a completed EIR for the Wilmington waterfront. The next item, you can read that, it says right in there that the community agreed to leave broad open to Banning's Landing. And the next item is an instrument of instit- Yeah, I did. Thanks, Joe. The next item is the, is the policy of institutional racism being carried out against the Wilmington community under Mayor Eric Garcetti. What it does, it, it closes, frees an Avalon to Banning's Landing, and no bicycle will be able to get there, no, and walking will get there, even though in this thing, it's to connect the two communities. It's to connect the, the people with, with the water area, which isn't much. We have, they have an overpass they're building in the TRAPAC. Once again, the people in Wilmington are going to have to go a mile out of the way to get down to their thing, which for 150 years, this is where Banning started the port. This is where that Avalon's been open for 150 years. Everyone in Wilmington knows where Avalon is and how you, how you get to the waterfront. So that's my comment. What we're asking for in Wilmington is fair share, and then I'll have a comment on six. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, web staff, please.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Dave Mathewson, interim deputy executive director for the port. I'd like to share with you an overview of our waterfront project and status. Before I begin, I would like to mention that we consider the LA waterfront, both San Pedro and Wilmington, and as you may recall, in 2009, we had both the Wilmington waterfront EIR as well as the San Pedro waterfront EIR approved by our board. And I know the purpose of this motion is relating to San Pedro, and I'd like to spend some time going through the San Pedro waterfront projects and the current status. So basically, the San Pedro waterfront project that was approved by the board in '09 covers approximately 600 acres. And the purpose here, the intent was to make it more of a visitor-serving destination, try to, what we called at the time, to deindustrialize the waterfront, make this more of a, a, a visitor-serving destination along the waterfront, provide a greater transition between the core cargo handling activities of the port on Terminal Island to the downtown San Pedro area. So we wanted to have a transitional use there, and so the focus was on providing for visitors serving in open space destinations. So going from the north to the south, we have, this doesn't seem to pick it up. I apologize, this is not. Lazy laser. Yeah, there we go. So what we've done to date, we have done certain elements of the overall waterfront project. The waterfront project included a number of elements, some of which have already been completed, and I'd like to go through those. The first one is the completion of the cruise terminal promenade around the cruise terminal, around the slip, and that actually goes all the way down to the downtown harbor. The idea, one of the elements of the waterfront was to have a continuous water's edge promenade. And so we've got this element already completed. We have completed the elements in the Cabrillo Way Marina, as well as around the existing Cabrillo Marina Phase One project. So we have a fairly large portion of the, of the promenade complete. Moving south, we had a number of proposed water cuts, the North Harbor Basin, and then the Downtown Harbor, and then the Seventh Street Pier. Currently, the Downtown Harbor project is, has been underway. It's going to be completed shortly. It will host, be vital in hosting the tall ships later this summer. This is an acre and a half of additional new fill, uh, new open water area. The idea here is to allow for the water, bring that water's edge closer to downtown, and provide a stronger connectivity to downtown San Pedro. With the North Harbor cut that was proposed, that is now the location of the USS Iowa, so that, that harbor cut is not contemplated at this time. We have the, um, I would say it's probably-
Question was, I get excited about this. How much money did the port save by placing the Iowa where it's at today, by not going into the cut?
Uh, not, not doing the North Harbor cut, that's probably in the neighborhood, for that project alone is in the neighborhood of, probably north of $10 million.
Let the record reflect that the port saved north of $10 million by placing the Iowa there.
And then we also, just to complete that thought, councilmember, we did lose the third cruise berth there, and so now we presently have to, when we have third, three cruise ships, we have to berth them out here.
No permanent structure there.
No permanent structure at this time, and we have to use temporary facilities. Then moving south, we have the downtown, we have the proposed ports of call redevelopment. And actually, if I could, I'd like to wait and come back to that afterwards. South of the, of the ports of call area, we have City Dock One. This used to be a former liquid bulk petroleum storage facility that closed in 2009. A couple of years ago, we did complete the demo, actually, I believe it was last year, we completed the removal of the tanks. The site still needs to be remediated, and this would be the site for the proposed Alt to Sea project that was approved by the city council in December of last year. In the Outer Harbor, we have a number of open space projects. The 22nd Street Park was completed. That is an 18-acre park that cost $21 million to construct. It's been heavily used for, for passive recreational uses.
Now, I understand, and Gary Leemore and I have a meeting right after this. There've been minimum use there, though, as far as major events and outdoor concerts. Can you give, just because of the members of the public here, I see our fine president of the county, neighborhood council, Dave Behar. Folks like him have been asking, why aren't we having huge musical festivals there at the 22nd Street Park?
I think there's two reasons, councilmembers. One is the, the turf, we wanted to make sure that the turf wasn't, it was designed so that it couldn't support large-scale stages and events on there, so it would be significant damage to the turf. Secondly, I think-
Poor planning.
Well, second-
It's such a great open space, and we're just using it for passive purposes, which is fine, but-
But, but I think-
This is a tip from an older councilman.
Sorry.
When you have music events, you then you get a Monday morning noise complaint event. So that's my only thing I got to say.
We have a great neighborhood council system down here that we embrace, that we would include in the planning.
And, and that was the second reason, as, as Councilmember Labong, you mentioned, that we had concerns about negative externalities.
Well, the PCAC, maybe, the PCAC, then?
That was PCAC. I believe Crescent Avenue Homeowners Association expressed some concerns about the immediate proximity of such events impacting their, their residences and activities. So that was why, because of those concerns that we didn't provide for a development that would allow for more active use of the site. And in place of that, what we decided to do was to move those types of activities, which we agree they're critical to programming the waterfront, we decided to use that in the, in the Outer Harbor side on an interim basis until the potential need for additional cruise terminals are developed. So as you are well aware, councilmember, we've had Cirque du Soleil out there, we're going to have-
Great use of that, absolutely.
And we'll have the Global Rally Cross out there later this summer. So we think that's a, a, a great location to put on those types of events.
Fantastic.
And then we've completed the Cabrillo Way Marina project. That was 700 slips, redeveloped in Watchorn Basin. And that completes the, the southerly section. So what I'd like to do now is go back to Ports of Call and provide a status report on where we're at with Ports of Call. Ports of Call is your, as you-
We're going to Wilmington.
Oh, okay. We're going to the Wilmington projects. Oh, one last thing, as, also as part of a, a project for the San Pedro waterfront, a project element was the adaptive reuse of the old warehouses at Nine and 10 in the Outer Harbor. And we went through that through a competitive solicitation. Crafted at the Port of Los Angeles opened their doors a little over a year ago in using Warehouse 10. They have over 100 artists now selling crafts. Warehouse Nine is now being proposed to be developed to support restaurants and a craft brewery, so we're hoping that those subleases would be completed this summer and they can start construction.
I was just about to ask the timeline on that, Dave, so.
Yeah. Right now, we just spoke to Crafted last week. They're well on their way to securing the necessary financing to proceed with this, so we think that, or they, they think that, they're optimistic that by the end of the summer, they could have the financing in place.
It was promised, or promised, it was, we, we, I, I heard that it'd be ready by the summer, so that's not the case.
Yeah, that won't happen.
Brewery will be open by the summer, but that's not the case.
Yeah, that's not going to happen, because they'll, they'll, we'll, we'll need to, they'll obviously need to go through city and get all the necessary permits, and they're just not there with the, with the financing package yet.
And the state, I just had a question I wanted to ask. This, the project of Mr. Rakovich is the-
That's Ports of Call, yeah.
Yeah, he has great history in transforming Los Angeles, so I think it's so exciting to have him down there. I would just say, want to make one thing for the port and the ambassadors here as well, or the president of the commission. Sometimes if you go somewhere to see something, you have a full understanding. I remember when Pier 39 was nothing in the Bay Area, and then they made it Pier 39 something, and it's a dynamic economic engine, not just the old Fisherman's Wharf, but all the way down to the Oakland Bay Bridge. If it's possible, with the select leadership, and you have a great neighborhood council, both in Wilmington and San Pedro and other areas, some of those community leaders go up on an early flight and home on a, a late flight, and tour 39 with the planning people of the Port of San Francisco and some of the city officials up there, just to see the dynamic. It's, it's, as Mr. Buscayino said, I know he's a champion for this, it's a, it's a, it's a diamond in the, in the rough, really. And I remember as a child coming down here and going and going over the ferry building, you weren't even born then, Joe, and it was a big trip for a big family to go down and see the port and watch it work. And I think there's a whole new way, because more people are involved in staycations. More people are staying in town and exploring Los Angeles and want to see real. So there's a great opportunity, but I just wanted to put out, if there's a way with the, the select group that you could maybe see what they're doing in San Francisco, or go to San Diego by bus one day, just to see what they're doing in transforming the Gaslamp District in San Diego and the convention, there's opportunity there. And I always think it's important to take the community leadership with you, so they could see firsthand with your planners, just an idea. But if you could give us a wrap-up on this, because we could go. Gary?
We just want to hit a couple of the Wilmington projects, and then we'll wrap it up with the Ports of Call. Really, two major elements in regards to the Wilmington waterfront, obviously, the Wilmington waterfront park, the 30-acre site was, has been completed and has been a huge success.
It's amazing. So many people are using that park. Amazing.
It is absolutely amazing. It's a, it's a great asset to the community. And then the other element, and this is some of the, some of the photos of the, of the park, the aerial view of, of the park as well. And then, let me go back, and then the second major project that we are-
Want to hit on the Wilmington Marina?
Oh, the Parkway.
We just, yeah, the Parkway.
Wilmington Parkway, yeah. We just had a grand opening of the Wilmington Parkway, and, and actually, that's just off of this slide. It's, it's up in this area right here. It was about a one and a half million dollar project that was just recently opened by the councilmember and the community, and that provides for landscaped walkways, additional sidewalks, lighting, and that appears to be being utilized by the folks in that immediate area as well. And then finally, the, the larger waterfront project that was part of the 2009 approval by the board in the EIR was to provide this linkage from the Wilmington- by the board in the EAR was to provide this linkage from the Wilmington Waterfront Park along Avalon Boulevard corridor to bring it to the water down to Banning's Landing, which is right here. And this project involved the development of a land bridge because of the active rail lines through here and Water Street. We wanted to realign Water Street, have a land bridge with landscaped areas, a pedestrian bridge that will link to it into an iconic tower display right at the foot of the Avalon Boulevard, which would provide an overview of port operations. There would also be some limited commercial development here, about 10,000 square feet to support restaurants and some retail operations, but this would be a plaza area, a promenade that would connect to the Banning's Landing and then up Avalon Boulevard back into the Wilmington community and the Wilmington waterfront park. And then quickly, back to Ports of Call. This is the ports, this is the site, as you may recall, the port went out with a competitive solicitation back in July of 2012 to secure a, or select a commercial developer. We went through that, and we ended up selecting a development team of Wayne Ratkovich and Jericho Development, which is a local San Pedro development team. We entered into an exclusive negotiating agreement with this development team, and there were responsibilities on both sides in terms of due diligence. This development team has, continues to work on their development concept, but it does include visitors serving retail restaurants and a significant anchor tenant for the project. Right now, while I think we probably all agree that the process has been a little bit slower than we would have liked, there isn't a huge amount of due diligence that's been required on both sides, and so we continue to work towards the ultimate goal of getting a term sheet and a ground lease approved by the board and ultimately the city council. Yeah, the term sheet, the ground lease would, we would need the environmental to support those actions, so we need to determine ultimately what the scope of this development's going to be, so then we can assess it environmentally.
Does this Ports of Call redevelopment include the historic San Pedro City Hall? Or some connection to it?
It's outside.
Just by a foot?
Across the street.
And what year was that built in, the San Pedro City Hall?
I'm surprised you don't know that.
Well, I think it's 1930, I think it's 1930. Who's the architect, Joe?
Don't know.
I think it was PK Shabram, but I'm not sure.
Ooh.
So, but anyway, we'll check it out and see. But I think it's so important, one thing that I did want to have, Mr. Buscagno, when you see that beautiful park up in Wilmington, find a suitable location to have the, you know, Wilmington Delaware, 3,221 miles, like pointer for that.
Like that, like the sister streets.
And then I want you to go to Delaware one day, it's just up the street from Washington, you're one of the top members of the League of Cities, the National League of Cities, and get a sign Wilmington, California, from a park there to connect the two, because people don't realize Phineas Banning came from Wilmington, Delaware. You know why I know that, Joe?
Why?
When I was 24, I was on a train, and the Amtrak conductor said Wilmington, Wilmington, Delaware! And then he went on about Phineas Banning and all that stuff. But he said it just like that, like tabulate the vote, we're...
Well, let me say this, Mr. Chair, one of the reasons why we wanted to have the TCT meeting here is to hear and listen to the update for our waterfront efforts in both San Pedro and Wilmington. And thank you, Dave, for your report, and thank you Ambassador for your leadership and your colleagues for pressing forward on this. There's a sense of urgency in getting this done. We are the last standing port that's not an attraction in this country. And along with the development team, I feel, I strongly feel we need an international brand that's attached to this development, that's going to drive people and money into this area. And I just spoke at the San Pedro Chamber luncheon just last week and told them we need to move on this and get to yes to make this happen, because we're just long overdue. And we're not going to wait another 10 years to get it done.
Mr. Chair, I'd be happy to keep this running, this is Mr. Chair talking to you. You're Mr. Chair of the redevelopment. I'd like to have this every other month if possible, or every three months, an update to keep the pressure on everybody to do this. Because even, I do want to give you better credit, I think it's more interesting than another port to the south, here, just a little south of here.
Yeah.
You know, because that's very an industrial port. This is very, this is a people's port here, and a community, and the light. So let's, Mr. City Clerk, every three months, let's have an update on this, and just keep it on and then keep it going, because I think it's such a wonderful initiative.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Note and file. Next item.
Item six is motion Buscagno-Bannon introduced on April 8, 2014, which proposes that council ask the Harbor Department to report to this committee with an overview of the department's monetary and in-kind donations, including below-market leases to nonprofit organizations with an accompanying explanation of the public benefits.
We have one public comment card, Mr. Ken Melendez.
Thank you, Mr. Melendez.
Thank you for the time again. I've heard this already at the Harbor Commission meeting a couple of weeks ago, it's an excellent report, and I do recommend that the two of you find out what percentage of that $25 million, I believe is the budget every year, is being spent...
Start all over, Ken, I'm sorry, I missed your first part.
First of all, I heard this report two Harbor Commission meetings ago, okay? It's an excellent report, and one of the things I would like you to do is to find out what percentage of the, I believe it's $25 million, and Cynthia can correct me if I'm wrong, is going to San Pedro and what percentage is going to Wilmington. The second thing that happened after this report was a presentation about where port operations are, and you'll find that it's in Wilmington and Terrell Island, where the money's made. The other thing I want to mention to you real briefly, too, is the Wilmington Marina open, that's true. I wrote the motion on it as a member of PCAC. It's part of a settlement, okay? So that's an example of San Pedro people suing the port, getting the money, and sharing it with Wilmington, and that's where that project comes from. The other point I want to make real quick, and then I'll get out of your hair, because I know it's late. This is LA waterfront, you know, we're told all the time that there's not any money on the Wilmington side. In here, the Wilmington Marina is mentioned, once again, it's a court-ordered settlement project. You have the $40 million water cut in San Pedro, which I totally support, and you also have Alt to Sea, I think the port's share of that is about between $50 and $60 million. So once again, I'm just getting right back to, in Wilmington, they need, we need fair share, we need the Wilmington waterfront moving forward, not sitting stale anymore. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Melendez.
Thanks, Ken.
Ms. Ruiz?
Mr. Clerk?
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Cynthia Ruiz, and I am Deputy Executive Director of External Relations here at the Port of Los Angeles. So with the Port of Los Angeles, our mission statement is that we are America's port, we're the number-one container port, and then we are the global leader for sustainability, security, and social responsibility. So what I'm going to be speaking with you this afternoon about is our social responsibility piece. But I do want to give a quick shout-out, we do have a president of our neighborhood council, Dave Behart, from the coastal neighborhood, San Pedro Neighborhood Council is here, so I just wanted to acknowledge him.
Dave, stand up.
I think he stepped out.
Oh, he just left.
He just left. All right, Dave, you're a great guy, Dave, we wanted to let you know, we want to honor you.
So he snuck out. So first of all, I wanted to kind of give you perspective about our annual community benefit, and this chart shows from 2010, 2011 to our upcoming fiscal year. So what you see in blue is actually dollars that are out of the port's pocket, and what the red shows is in-kind. So we both have in-kind support, and we actually have monetary support as well. So if you look at the upcoming fiscal year, 14, 15, total dollar amount is 38.5 million. 22.9 of that is actually hard dollars, and 15.6 of that is money that is in-kind, and I'll talk about that in a minute. So if you look at, you might ask yourself the question, well, 2010, 2011 looks a lot higher versus now, and a few years ago, that's when we were doing a lot of our capital programs. You heard earlier about the Wilmington Waterfront Park, you know, in the last few years, the Port of Los Angeles has actually developed 50 acres of open space between the 22nd Street Park, Wilmington Waterfront Park, and I know you know Councilmember Labanj, 50 acres of open space is pretty good.
Right.
So for our upcoming year, as I indicated, it's 38.5, and this is the breakdown, recreational and park facilities, capital improvement, port, park, facility maintenance, sponsorship program, and that's what I'm going to talk about in a few minutes, educational programs, red car operation, waterfront fountain and promenade, rent agreements, and recreational properties. So recreational and park facilities, that's our great Cabrillo Marine Aquarium, the Cabrillo Beach Parking and the lifeguards there, the Los Angeles Maritime Museum, Point Furman Lighthouse, and other recreational and park-operated facilities in our area. Our capital improvement for next year is $3.4 million, it was actually $4.8, 3.4 of that's going to Los Angeles waterfront, that's for Alt to Sea design, the downtown harbor cut. Although the downtown harbor cut will be opening on June 20, we actually have money that's billed to us after and will be paying next year, next fiscal year. We also have port, park, facility maintenance at 4.4, that's for the Harbor Boulevard Parkway, the cruise ship promenade area, 22nd Street Park, and port security services at 1.4 million dollars. So sponsorship and programs. So our sponsorship budget is $1.5 million, and then we have an additional $154,000 in community events.
Cynthia, I'm sorry, can you go to the last slide?
Absolutely.
Explain the port security services. Now, that's port PD, footbeats, bike officers...
Right, so as you know, council member, we have a lot of community events from our Cars and Stripes, Lobster Fest, and that's money that's used to have the port police staff those events.
Very good. And we have the best port law enforcement maritime in the world, here, here.
We absolutely do.
And we have, I think, I saw Chief Boyd earlier, Mari Sella, thanks for doing the wave, our port officers, if you're listening, we love you, thank you for your service.
We do, and Chief Boyd is the best. So sponsorship programs, what we've decided to do with our $1.5 million, we decided to make that more open and transparent, so a million dollars out of that 1.5, we have decided, well, this talks about our educational programs, educational programs, our international trade education, ITEP that we're very familiar with, our top sale program, which actually takes youth out on the tall ships and teaches them about teamwork, that's a great program. We also have contract services to operate the red car, it costs $1.2 million a year, and our waterfront fountain to maintain that on a contractual basis is $700,000 a year. So our, this is the in-kind, reduce rent, our rent-free agreements, that the dollar value on that is $5.1 million, so reduced rate rent at USS Iowa, Pacific Maritime Association, Eastview Little League, the Boys and Girls Club gets free rent, and the Boys Scouts of America also gets free rent. So the meat of this is our $1.5 million in sponsorship.
Cynthia, I'm sorry, maybe Jack Hedge, I don't know if he's still there. What is the status of the LA Council Boy Scouts of America, their lease? That hasn't been solidified yet? Thanks, Jack.
Jack Hedge, the Director of Real Estate.
Thanks, Cynthia.
Good afternoon, Councilman. Actually, we're planning to go out for an RFP for that site, and we fully expect the Boy Scouts will be one of the respondents, but we plan to go out for an RFP for that site.
Timeline on that, do we know?
In the next few months, we just approved what we call the green sheet, which is the preliminary approval process internally. To get that approved, should be on the street very shortly.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Let me ask you a question, just a question, the Boy Scouts, they got a good, fair shot to continue that, because I think the Boy Scouts are important, as the Girl Scouts are.
I believe, I believe they do, yes, they've been a good tenant.
Nobody pushing them out.
No, they've been a good tenant, they've been a good standing, but we have a number of qualified, we believe, groups that have expressed interest in it, and we believe it's in the best interest of the city and the tidelands to give a lot of people a fair shot at it.
I got it, but the Boy Scouts, over 100 years, would make it a difference, and they're transforming, so I just want to let you know.
They do have a fair shot.
I was a scout, and I'm chairman of this committee.
We know where Tom stands on this.
They have a fair shot, sir.
So at the last commission meeting, our commission has given us permission to use our sponsorship dollars in a more open and transparent way, and we're going to turn that into a grant program. We did a pilot program on the grants last year, and it was very successful, so out of the pot of $1.5 million, 1 million of that will go to a grant-based model, and the reason the whole bucket's not going, we did want to keep some money in the sponsorship for our business development, our port police, and our engineering that have events that they attend. So through our grant program, we have to make sure that it meets at least one of our program goals, which it has to pertain to the LA waterfront, environment, international trade, jobs, safety, security, maritime history, sustainability, or have overall community benefit. So as I just indicated, $100 will be, 100, 100, million dollars, excuse me, a little bit different, million dollars will be available, and actually, the grant applications are available now. We're going to have small, medium, and large grants, we're going to divide it up into two sessions, so there'll be initial session this spring, because this program will take place next fiscal year. It's not, the applications will be online, but then they can either download them and fill them out and bring them in to us, or mail them in to us. I'm not sure, and I can check on that, if they can completely fill it out online, but we're trying to get more tech-friendly. This gives you the timeline, so the applications are now available. One thing we did learn through the pilot program is that we want to have workshops to really educate the community. Applications for the first round are due June 2, and then we will have a review panel and award the first round of grants on June 19.
Going to every neighborhood council that has a benefit to reach out, to try to, they're going there...
Yes, absolutely.
All right, good, that's all you got to say is yes.
Yes, of course. Round two is this fall, and that concludes my presentation, I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
Explain the workshop coming up in a couple days on these grants.
So basically, we want to make sure that we have two workshops, one in San Pedro and one in Wilmington, because we want to reach out to both communities, and they're educational workshops, and I'll tell you where we actually got that from, the Harbor Community Benefit Foundation, through their grant program, we watched what they did, their workshops were very successful. It's basically just going through the application itself and working with the nonprofits on how to fill out that application.
Nice, thank you.
So it's educational.
I also wanted to say, I know years ago, maybe 30 years ago, the Port of Los Angeles revitalized a lagoon in San Diego, and I just wanted to let staff know that it's very nice for San Diego, but there's some lagoons upriver in Los Angeles, on the Los Angeles River. There's Ferndale and other areas that you want to look at, so if there's some mitigation you have to do. I think it all had to do with Pier 400, even before that dredging out, we have a lot of work in Los Angeles County that we could do on that.
Wow.
So, you ever seen that, Joe?
I haven't.
It's a nice sign. Well, this, have a trip to San Diego to rededicate that work that you guys did.
Sure that happened way before we got here.
And so the final piece of that, I know that Mr. Melendez asked about, as we move forward next fiscal year, what percentage of that money is Wilmington and what percentage is San Pedro? I'll be more than happy to look into that and report back.
Thank you, Cynthia, for your work and your service to Los Angeles. I have no other cards in front of me, we've completed the agenda, is that correct? Wish everybody well, give a shout-out to Mr. Hillman, the former LAPD commander who's here, does such a great job for all of Los Angeles.
Oh, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Item number six, approved?
Approved, certainly. We don't do anything, but we don't approve. Okay, everybody have a great day, continue to serve the city well.
Thank you.